All right, we'd like to call this meeting of the West Alice, West Milwaukee School District to order, please. Uh, Mr. Schultz, if you could please read us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Suzanne, can we please read the roll?
Mr. Sikich.
Present.
Mr. Schultz.
Present.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Yuzdrav.
Here.
Mrs. Josta.
Here.
Ms. Poo.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
President.
Here. Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Um, do we have any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda?
I have none.
Board members? Okay. All right, and then we will go on to public comments. Uh, first, we remind you to give your name and address, um, and then, uh, limit you to three minutes, and, um, reminder that we don't debate or get into conversation during that, but we'll take notes and get a response to you shortly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, Tracy DuBois, uh, 1469 South 55th Street. Um, I want to say good evening, and I'd like to thank you all for what you do. Um, it does not go unnoticed, believe me. Uh, the issue that I'm bringing up tonight is in regards to the shortage of long-term substitute teachers in the district. My daughter attends Pershing Elementary in a fifth grade classroom. Before the school year began, she was supposed to be one of nineteen students in her classroom. However, there were two maternity leaves at the same time, and the long-term sub was obviously only available for one classroom. Three teachers absorbed the students into their classrooms. The teachers didn't seem to mind the idea, although my daughter is now one of twenty-five, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when she talks about the negative behaviors of the students that weren't supposed to be in her room, it upsets me. There are negative behaviors everywhere in every classroom, but the numbers increase with class size, and that is just one of many aspects that affect each student in, when the class sizes rise. My son attends West Milwaukee Middle School. There's currently a teacher there that is out on long term, and her students have been absorbed into other classrooms as well. He is also one that is affected by this. He complains about the amount of kids in the classroom, the noise level, and the inability to complete his work. He's a very good student and is there for the purpose of learning, and has been coming home upset. Both teachers are doing what they can to make sure that my kids are getting, um, what they need. However, to be realistic, classroom equals less, more kids per classroom is less attention given per student. I know that class sizes are within normal limits, but I know the effects that this has on both students and staff, as I myself, as an educator in a different district. Having class sizes rise for this reason is unacceptable and will not bring students to our district. In fact, it will have them leave. Um, I've thought many times of where I want my son to go to high school. There's lots of opportunities for him. He wants to be an anesthesiologist, and I know there's lots of high schools that I could send him to. I can get him a Fulbright Scholarship to Marquette High School, but he wants to stay here because of the teachers and because of the principals. None of this should fall back on the shoulders of the teachers and principals. It's their job to deal with the students directly. I have complete faith in the teachers that have done this, but feel that they shouldn't have to take other kids into their classrooms. Please understand that all that I want as a parent and a teacher is that principals and teachers are given the tools they need to help students succeed. Once again, I thank you for your time, and I know that this is a time commitment for all of you, and it's, does not go unnoticed, that's for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right, um, then we will go on to the superintendent's report.
Great, um, thank you. We'll start this evening at seven point one, the report from James E. Daki High School, our student representative.
Hang on.
Do I just talk?
Yeah, go ahead. Introduce yourself to the board, and, right, talk right into the microphone.
Hello, my name is Cody Seifer, and I'm a senior at Daki High School. Thank you so much for having me here tonight and being able to share out on the exciting things going on at Daki. I'd like to go through some things that have gone on this year, month by month, to start off with. In August, staff had a successful professional development experience before the school year even started. All staff were returning staff from last year, and so a cohesive team was already in place. Staff focused mo- much of their professional development time in August on continuing their work on deep, deeper learning and project-based learning. Our strength has been, uh, teachers collaborating on how to incorporate projects and real-life learning experiences into the classroom. This has been a focus, that weekly collaboration meetings where teachers tune projects that are, that they are doing in their classrooms, and it's been fun for the teachers to learn from one another. To support the focus on project-based learning, an old tech ed room in our school was transformed into a creative space we call the studio. The studio is filled with all types of tools that allow and promote creative, creativity through projects, tools such as 3D printers, iMac computers, sound and video equipment, circuit machine, I mean, cricket machine, sewing machine, spray paint booth, screen printing machine, art supplies, and more. Also, an hour was added to every student schedu- uh, school day to allow for time for use to use the studio and create. Now, everyone was excited about that. So, the studio is open every hour, and students can use that time to work on projects for school or passion projects that they are interested in on their own. Daki continued with the own-it theme from last year, that is, learning from taking personal responsibility. We have also continued with our restorative practices. Focuses thus involves building a strong school community than doing the work to repair things after any situations where harm was caused to that community. This happens through small restorative conferences with administrators and teachers to large community circles with students. September brought the start of this, of the school year. Since we graduated a hundred twenty-five seniors last year, we welcomed over half the school of new students. Our first week or two was full of welcome team building and PBIS activities. One practice that we continued from last year is our weekly school-wide community circles. A new event that we added this year was a monthly Daki family se- celebration that takes place in our auditorium. Staff recognize students who are doing positive things. We have fun activities, announcements, and are made, are made, and students have the opportunity to share out a talent or skill. We have had a couple impressive singers this year already. Friday Open Gym continues at Daki this year. Students who earn a certain grade and behavior expectations can stay after and play hoops or other activities with staff and other students. This has been a powerful motivator for a large number of students. One exciting new partnership that was started this year was the Guitar Chief. He is a gentleman who refurb- refurbished his guitars, and he heard about our after-school guitar club for students and asked to get involved. This generous man not only fixes and provides guitars to our club, but we have worked it out so students can earn the ability to actually own the guitar for themselves. It has been a great partnership. October was full of community involvement opportunities for students, to name just a few. We had our first four blood drives, a canoeing field trips, ropes course trip, weekly trip to senior living home, mock interviews, and much more. Another highlight was Mr. T.'s government class, partner- partnering with the League of Women Voters to get students registered to vote. By training the class to help people register, our school was able to register more students than the most comprehen- comprehensive high schools that the League of Women Voters works with. Way to go, T.'s Government Class. Finally, the month of November brought more exciting events at Daki through our school counselor, Mr. Jakowski, and M A T C. Twenty-four students were able to apply to M A T C through the M A T C Promise Program. Also, Daki hosted its first exhibition night during parents' plus teacher, teacher conferences on November seventh. It was the first chance for students to show off the projects they had created for classes. Next, Wisconsin DPI came to visit to see our new and improved community closet. They were very impressed with all the items that are available to help our students in need. Finally, Daki held their annual Thanksgiving lunch last Tuesday. Staff donated time and food in order to provide, provide us a Thanksgiving meal with all the fixings. The most powerful part of the event was when Mr. Goz allowed anyone present to step to the microphone to share what they were thankful for. Twenty-three students, that's right, twenty-three students had the courage to speak openly in front of the whole school and all of our guests, school board members, Dan Bailey and Gary Schultz, Schultz. Superintendent Dr. Lexman, Mayor Devine, and other distinguished guests got to witness the power, the power of Daki High School. Students shared messages of thanks for teachers, a second chance, a place, and where they feel welcome and delicious meal together as a school family. It was an amazing event, and one that would not be soon forgotten. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this, this evening, and look forward to coming back in January to give you more exciting updates on what is happening at Daki High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good morning. Before you leave, I, I just want to, I want to thank you, um, I, I was able to walk away with, uh, a deeper meaning of what's going on at Daki. And to listen to all of you get up there, twenty-three, thinking, you know, and to see who was all there, and I, I did get a chance to see the, the different room where you have the 3D printers and unbelievable.
Yeah, I like, I, I enjoy it a lot. I li- I like it a lot, actually.
And you, you did a good job tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
We look forward to having you back.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday season.
You too.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, we're to seven point two, the legislative update. Um, to the state level, there is a hearing on scope statement related to disproportionality in special education. Uh, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction will conduct preliminary public hearing from two-thirty to four on November twenty-ninth, twenty-nineteen, on a statement of scope related to dish- disproportionality in special education and local education agency, LEA determinations, under the federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The statement of scope will guide development of emergency and permanent rules to amend Chapter P I eleven, which is establishing standards, criteria, to criteria related to racial and ethnic disproportionality in special education, identification, placement, and discipline. It's one that, um, Deidre and Ann watch carefully. It's one that, um, DPL, DPI has held as accountable for in the past, where we over-identify or we have, um, uh, more kids of color, more kids, um, of, um, racial groups that are represented in specialized than are represented in our general kind of overall population, right? So, that's the disproportionality that they're, they're talking about. And so, they're, um, going to be developing more rules around that and what districts need to do. Two point one, Dr. Dell.
I'm sorry, I had a question about that. Do they take into account the services we provide here in the district where people might be attracted who do have special education students to actually enroll in our district because of the services we provide?
I don't know that. Um, that might be a Deidre question, but my guess is probably not, right? It's simply, my guess is it's strictly looking at your overall population and, um, who's represented in special education.
Yeah, they, they don't distinguish between how long the students were with you or whether you were the one who identified them as a student with a special need. Uh, we were identified as disproportionate for quite a few years because we had a foster family that would take in all students of a particular race that were all students with special needs, and it would always tip us over the scales of being identified as disproportionate in particular areas, but that's, that part is not taken into consideration when you're identified as disproportionate.
That seems a little bit skewed to me. I mean, there's other, obviously, if we were identifying people as special needs ourselves versus people who are moving into the district but already with a standing IEP or other designations, that should make a difference.
I don't disagree with that. Um, at the time that we were identified as disproportionate, I scheduled quite a few meetings with some of our reps and shared data on the students that we had that transferred in, that we didn't identify. Um, at that time, we were disproportionate for over-identifying students who are African-American with intellectual disabilities. Well, I don't actually, I don't know what preventative work you would like me to do to impact somebody's actual, how many standard deviations they're off in their IQ from the norm, and so, um, that is not, it was not well-received conversation at that time, that these were not students that we identified, um, and they were students who had moved into the district, uh, and that there was no consideration for the services provided. What I will say is it's important oversight to have, because there are other districts where the disproportionality is very, very significant, and we are, were, for a little while, trending in a, not a great direction with over-identification of particular races, especially as students with emotional and behavioral disturbances. So, it's important oversight that the Department of Public Instruction provides, but every once in a while, you hit kind of a weird packet of data, and no, there's no talk, no explaining your way out of that.
I have two follow-up questions. One, are we going to have the opportunity to go to one of these public things and, and ask any sort of input that we would?
Typically, we do, yep.
Okay. And the second thing, you know, I could, this worries me, because then it, you're, you're encouraging people to not identify someone as special education, and thus, they may not be getting the actual services they need to succeed as a student. And I don't like incentivizing basically that possibility. I don't want to get dinged for having too many per- people in a certain racial group being identified as special needs when this person actually does need it, and it could encourage people to, well, the borderline, I'll just put them in this pile over here so that we can not have to worry about it, and I don't like that. But, I mean, I don't, you're not doing it, I'm just stating it as a, as a fact. I think it's a poor way to do governance when you're talking about such a thing. I agree, oversight is important for the reasons you, you lined up, but the other side of the...
Well, there's really specific criteria to qualify as a student with a special need, and I think the important thing is just to make sure that we're really following that process and the way that it's outlined and identified, and it's some of where we've adjusted our RTI and PBIS to be multi-tiered systems of support instead, because, again, we were trending in kind of the wrong direction in a couple of, of groups, but we didn't just say, ooh, well, then we're not going to identify students who may fall into that racial category, we're instead going to look at the system that's creating these referrals and make sure that it's, it's meeting the needs of the children where they should be met. Um, and so, it, it had us highlighting, for us in particular, we needed to watch the number of students who were English language learners who were being identified as students with disabilities, and so, that's a, a tough one, um, you know, because they come into the country sometimes having no English, and yet, so clearly, their learning looks different than other kids, and so, that's one we have to watch pretty carefully. But then, we needed to analyze the system that we're using to make those referrals to make sure that it's, it's adequate on the front end to not end up with too many referrals on the back end.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so, the second piece, uh, here is, there's now, um, expected to be two point one billion dollars in new general purpose revenue estimated through mid-two thousand twenty-one. The outgoing Walker administration announced the state will see a projected two point one billion in general purpose revenue through mid-two thousand twenty-one. The bi-annual report found the state's ending balance on June thirty for the current fiscal year is now expected to be six hundred and sixty-two point six million. That's four hundred and forty point nine million more than previously expected. The state is then projected to see another one point six billion in additional general purpose revenue over the, um, nineteen-twenty-one budget. Still, the Walker administration noted, new spending requests for state, from state agencies outstripped the anticipated revenue growth by nearly one point one billion. So, it's both good news and tough decisions that will have to be made going forward, and there's nothing new, um, at the federal level at this time. And then, going on to seven point three, district recognitions, a number of them this evening. First, at Nathan Hale High School, uh, French teacher Teresa De Hayes worked with her students to celebrate National Kindness Day on November thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. As a gesture of kindness, her French students gave out free compliments by putting positive notes on lockers, and they shared a verbal compliment as classmates entered the building for school. Um, I was there right around that time and saw the stickies all over the place, and it was, I think, a really interesting way to, um, spread kindness and kind of positive thoughts. Uh, the chamber choir, under the direction of Zach Beeksma, performed at the Thirty-Fifth Annual City of West Alice Community Thanksgiving Breakfast on Monday, November nineteenth, twenty-eighteen. At James Daki, Principal Greg Gels, staff and students hosted the Thanksgiving luncheon, as we just heard, on Tuesday, November twentieth, twenty-eighteen. In following lunch, many sh- students shared the poignant ways staff, students, and friends at James E. Daki High School had made a difference in their lives. At Shared Journeys, Lisa Cola and her staff held a Thanksgiving luncheon for students and community members on Tuesday, November twentieth, twenty-eighteen. Shared Journeys is also hosting a Paint Night fundraiser on Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Knights of Columbus. At Frank Lloyd Wright Intermediate School, classroom teachers Ashley Gorski, Carrie Clark, Crystal Clem, and Maddie Meg helped their students organize a special Veterans Day ceremony. It included a color guard ceremony, lunch, and an opportunity for veterans to meet with students. Three local news teams reported the event on the evening news. At Irving Elementary School, staff members made donations each week in the month of October to wear jeans and the color pink on Wednesdays. They raised four hundred and fifty dollars for the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. At Madison Elementary, on November twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, members of the West Alice Women's Club, Kathy Lyons and Susie Metzenheim, will visit Madison Elementary School to read to twenty-six students and give them books as part of their four K Harvest of Books program. At Walker Elementary School, teacher Patty Kurtz worked with her students to welcome Captain Stephen W. Hampton, United States Navy retired, to speak at a Veterans Day assembly. Over thirty-three veterans, friends, and family of students attended. On November thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, members of the West Alice Women's Club, Susie Jackie and Susie Metzenheim, will visit Walker Elementary School to read to forty-five students and give them books as part of their four K Harvest of Books program. And in leadership and learning, thanks to all the staff who led sessions at our district professional development day, Mara Eli, Jamie Gels, Danny Daly, Alisa Dearbeck, Chelsea Crane, Kristen Bronwell, Katie Robertson, Andrew Az- Arshusky, Brooke Smith, Erica Lanin, Sadie Boss, Heather Davis, Amy Gal Sweeney, Haley Schwint, Kellen Lynch, and Diana Dom. And in communication and community relations, on November thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, fifty students from Jefferson Elementary School will be part of the Village of Manor Park Kids-to-Kids Toy Drive Event. That's open to the public from eleven to seven. Um, I went there last year, and it's, um, really an interesting event to be a part of. And residents of Village of Manor Park have knit over sixty mitten hat and scarf sets for students in our intermediate schools. The sets knitting school colors will be distributed to students in December. And then, just a couple updates and information items under seven point four. Um, last week was a quiet, short week, so there's not actually a lot to report on with just a couple days with kids. Um, but interesting thing that actually goes more with the recognitions, Deidre and I did our last, um, fall staff meeting this morning at Central High School, and on the way out, one of the things we learned from Jeff Taylor is that it's been, it's been one of Jeff's traditions coming out of, um, his other schools, is that he asks staff to contribute dollars, and then they get together and they buy, uh, all of the things needed for families to have a Thanksgiving meal. Um, and he raised enough, more than he's ever had contributed, so that they were able to put together twenty-four meals, and then different staff members actually take the meals and deliver them right to the house. Um, so, they've been all over West Alice, on the north side of Milwaukee, um, and just, Jeff was so proud that, um, the staff really kind of stepped up, and then actually took the additional steps to go deliver to families personally. Um, then, um, tomorrow, excuse me, tomorrow on Wednesday, Deidre, Jeff, Beth, Caitlin and I will be attending a Studer Conference in Nashville. It's called, sorry, it's called Destination High Performance. It's part of our, um, continuous improvement efforts working with Studer, and Studer agreed to waive the cost of the conference for us, so, and for the, for us, and we try to, still try to watch carefully how we use our dollars, so that's just the cost of the flight and one night in the hotel, and, um, we're all getting on flights at five something in the morning.
But you're going to Nashville.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but you hope we won't do much.
Well, that's right. But it's, we're, we're curious, and it, I'm excited about it, because now, after three years of this work with Studer, we have, actually have some of the indicators that say we're starting to perform and improve, so it's a kind of a cool story to bring and share with other districts that they're working with. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Great. All right, um, we'll go to item eight, the board president's report. We'll start with the review of the board calendar. Um, there was a, a change from the last calendar that, um, Sue that did sign out today, and you'll notice, uh, in the tentative calendar meetings. So, today, Monday, tw- on November twenty-sixth, uh, is regular Board of Education meeting, followed by superintendent's workshop on the twenty-nineteen, twenty, twenty school calendar, um, survey room. Uh, Monday, December tenth, starting at six PM, is a regular Board of Education meeting, followed by Financial Stability and Efficiency Workshop on the Budget Calendar. Um, we are moving the audit report to January due to the schedule of the auditors. And then, Monday, December seventeenth, is our last scheduled meeting of twenty-eighteen, starting at six PM. A regular Board of Education meeting, followed by a workshop, which is our board development with, um, Drew Howick, so that should be good for all of us. Um, do any board members have any community events or anything else that they'd like to update? No?
So, on December seventh, Friday, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at Wilson Elementary, um, there is going to be something that my, uh, email just refreshed right when I was going to talk about it. Uh, I just wanted to get the name right, so, um, but you guys all should have received an email, and Dr. Lexman as well. Um, so, they're going to be having, like, games and, um, like, treats and stuff like that for the kids, and then, um, the PTA president, who happens to also be my wife, uh, requested that we have some board members, and if Dr. Lexman can spare a half an hour to read to the students, so either a wintry story or a Christmas story, um, and then you could leave right after that if you have other things to go. So, uh, let me, let me pull the, the email back up here again, so I get the, um, the name correct.
The Wilson Holiday Celebration.
That's it. The Wilson Holiday Celebration, sorry. So...
It used to be called Breakfast with Santa, but now it's the Wilson Holiday Celebration.
And, uh, I, I have inside information that Santa may also be present, so, if you do attend, make sure you're on, your best behavior.
Great. Anybody else?
I will say, um, you know, I also work, do a lot at the Frank Lloyd Wright PTA, and we have a very busy weekend coming up as well. Um, we will also be walking in the holiday parade. Uh, Frank Lloyd Wright will be, um, alongside the Palms team, handing out flyers for our Barnes and Noble Book Fair, which is at Brookfield Square this coming Sunday, December second. We will be staffing that. We will also, Mary Pat Michaels has several of our, um, music groups performing at Barnes and Noble at Brookfield Square from twelve to five. Um, I think from one until four-thirty or so, there's a couple different groups coming. Um, also, proceeds from the sales that day go to help Frank Lloyd Wright students and staff, so I would also encourage you to go shopping that day if you have that. There's also an online flyer that's on the FLW's Facebook page. Um, I was also at the Veterans Day Celebration at FLW on the eighth, um, and it was really, really great, and it was great to see the media come and celebrate something so positive that our community is doing, so.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to, um, shout out to Central's Theater Program for a fantastic performance of Shrek, and I know that it wasn't just Central, there was five different schools represented in that show, so kudos to the West Alice, um, kids who performed, and to Jordan Pollard for putting on a great show.
Absolutely, great. All right. We'll go on to item nine, the consent agenda. We have item nine point one, the approval of minutes from the November twelfth, twenty-eighteen, regular Board of Education meeting, and the November nineteenth, twenty-eighteen workshop. Item nine point two, the employment summary. Item nine point three, the supplementary contracts, and item nine point four, the financial summary. Does anyone need any of those items separated? If not, we'd look for a motion.
Moved, approved, seconded.
Moved, approved, and seconded. Any additional comments or questions?
I, I will say, I did have a couple questions on some of the financial stuff, which I had sent to Caitlin, which I have not gotten responses back on, but I think they're just, uh...
Clarification?
Yeah.
Okay, did you need to abstain from voting for this?
Uh, no, I won't.
Okay.
I just wanted to make note.
Okay. Um, it's removed and seconded, no additional comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. We'll go on to item, action items, uh, number ten. Ten point one, uh, high school international field trip to Europe, July of twenty-twenty.
This is Deidre.
Okay. You can sit here.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, this one is a proposal for a joint field trip between our, um, history students and our students in our English department, so with that, I will pass it over to April to share more.
Hi, I'm April Ellery. I am English teacher at Nathan Hale High School. I've been at Hale for nineteen years. I've been traveling internationally with students. Uh, my first trip was as, um, a chaperone in two thousand and two, and then I started taking kids internationally in two thousand and thirteen, and we go every other year. We're kind of on the off-year of the Spanish trip, so that kids have a choice nearly every year of, um, like, a larger trip that they'd like to go on. Last summer, Bob Kinsey and I took twelve kids to Great Britain. We spent nine days in London, one day in York, and then some days in Edinburgh, Scotland. Um, the trip that you have in front of you being proposed to take is a trip that, um, this time takes us to London, Bruges, and Paris. I have been to all of those destinations before with students, except for Bruges. This will be our first time in Bruges, but we have done London, Paris before. Any questions? I have books too, but I didn't bring them. I showed up because there's so many members that probably haven't seen them. We do a big scrapbook after every trip.
But you can send us a link if you have it on the blog, try it, no?
No. I'm, I'm an English teacher. The trip that you have in front of you being proposed to take is a trip that, um, this time takes us to London, Bruges, and Paris. I have been to all of those destinations before with students except for Bruges. This will be our first time in Bruges, but we have done London, Paris before. Any questions? I have books too, but I didn't bring them. I should have because there's so many members that probably haven't seen them. We do a big scrapbook after every trip.
But you can send us a link if you have it on our try to, no?
No, I'm, I'm an English teacher. I have books. Lots of books. Oh, but we do have Twitter. And so whenever we go places, we have, um, the, the Twitter that we use. And then my husband travels domestically, so he takes kids to D C kind of on the off-years of my international trips. So we use the Twitter for that as well.
Great. Any questions?
Um, I did, I know that you guys do fundraisers, so the kids that, you know, they can help raise their own money for the trip. Yep. Do you know what you're gonna be doing this year for fundraising for this trip? Yep. I am the fundraising queen. Um, I actually have already started fundraising because I, I fundraise with the kids as well. And then any money that I have, um, we use it to do, like, extra activities or side trips. So last year in London, um, I took the kids for a high tea in, um, a crypt of a church. We had a proper, like, huge English tea. Um, and it also paid for our admission into the Tower of London. So we spent the afternoon at, the Tower of London is a, not just a tower, it's a fortress, um, with tours. So I just did City Tin fundraiser for that one. Um, we, we have a little bit of a late start with this trip. Usually I would have fundraised Kringle's, um, and Marcus movie tickets by now too, but we haven't, we haven't even had a meeting, obviously, for the trip yet because you're just talking about it tonight. So that's, those are kind of my staples around the holiday. But we do bake sales. I do, like, Lula Row sales. Um, I've done the Barnes and Noble thing before. We actually do two different kinds of fundraising. We do group fundraising through a bake sale, something we do as a group that goes into the group pot and pays for group activities. And then the kids have individual sales that they would do. And all that money individually goes to the price of their trip. So they can do as much or as little fundraising as they'd like to.
Okay. Keep, keep us posted.
Okay. You have all of our addresses and our phone numbers, so we can help out. I am happy to ask you for money. So yes.
Any additional questions? If not, we'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve?
Second. Removed and approved and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Wonderful time. All right. Item ten point two, the Recreation Center Construction Budget. Please toss her. Nice to see you again.
Yeah, I'm back. As promised. Um, well, so our board is here tonight to ask board's approval, um, to increase our construction budget, um, to an amount not to exceed eight million dollars. As everyone is aware, in June of twenty eighteen, the board approved a Recreation Center Construction Budget not to exceed six million dollars, and that was, um, based on our fund balance at that time. Um, and after review and analysis of our current and projected fund balance in Fund eighty, and then the designs that have been submitted and plans, um, from Growth Design Group and C G Schmidt, it's been determined that the project design that'll best meet our needs, um, address all current program space, and provide opportunity for future growth, has a budget of seven million, four hundred and seventy thousand. Um, as we previously discussed, there's some factors that have contributed to that increase. Those have included, um, steel tariffs, some findings of our soil pouring testings, the Survive a Live House, our existing foundation issues, uh, current H VAC systems. There's a number of things. Um, so that's why we've built in a cushion, as we kind of previously discussed, um, in that budget not to exceed the eight million dollar mark. And that would allow for, um, not all of these, but variances of landscape, um, designs, firewalls, and sprinklers, making sure our design is aesthetically appealing, having sustainable and durable materials on the outside and inside as well. So, um, our current fund balance will be used along with projected fund balances from the eighteen nineteen fiscal year and the nineteen twenty, as our tentative completion date of the project will be February of twenty twenty.
Questions? Noah?
So, uh, this is obviously a bit more than was talked about in the workshop that we had last week. Originally, it was just a flat seven four seven. Uh, now we're looking at an not to exceed of eight million. And the amount that was left over in the fund at the time, when we're looking at seven four seven, uh, was like two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, correct? So, not to exceed over eight million, obviously would eat up that and then some. But I know we hadn't discussed about the amount you've received in the nineteen twenty school year. We're only looking at, uh, what we're gonna get this year and then the next year in nineteen. So with the amount that you would have, plus your programming, are we still looking, I, what I don't want to end up with is a zero dollar, uh, fund balance for you after the end of having a not to exceed of eight million, plus all your programming needs, obviously. So is, you know, I presume you've thought about this. Um, please give me your opinion about that.
Uh, well, I, I, the design that ultimately, as we discussed, really meets our programming needs and really will allow us to best serve our community and do the things we want to do in terms of expanding programming, is the design that's at the seven point five million. However, we've already experienced some unexpected, so we do want to leave ourselves a cushion. And if we find, as we continue to progress through our budget cycles, that we have the funding to, I don't know, do some of these additionals if needed, better landscaping, different things like that, better gym floor, whatever it is, we have that ability. Um, our every intention is to stay at the seven point four seven million.
And that originally included a cushion, right, according to the workshop, right? There was some, the, the developers had said that they had built in mon-, you know, projected steel cost increases that are gonna happen over the next year and a half, um, along with, uh, I think it was a five to six percent for, uh, construction costs and another one to two percent for soft costs.
Correct.
That were built in the seven four seven.
Correct.
So on top of that rating, like, you know, a little over half a million, in case there's another unknown surprise when we start actually digging, putting shovels in the ground, sort of situation.
Right. And one of the things that we have talked about with them is where we can adjust and be flexible. So, I mean, it's fluid throughout the whole entire process. Um, and like I said, they are confident that we can get the plan that we want for the seven point four seven. But we don't want to lock our, I mean, or it would involve coming back to the board.
Right.
Throughout the process.
And you could be left with half a roof or something in the meantime while we're deliberating.
One last thing, I just want to confirm, this is not affecting the tax levy. We're not changing the tax rate to that point to increase the amount we're going to tax for the rec department of this. This is all within what we're normally levying for that amounts, are correct?
That is correct. No additional levy. Um, the other thing too, I want to point out is we, um, haven't really spent our fund balance i- in previous years. So in terms of leaving us without, um, there, there are guidelines on what a healthy fund balance should look like, but you're really restricted as to what you can, can do with those funds. So, um, I don't anticipate, you know, us putting ourselves in a position where we have no kind of backup. And that's all based on our previous revenue expenditures, those types of things.
Ms. Berry?
Thank you. Uh, Shelley, I know that we have all discussed what you just got through discussing with us tonight, and you've gone over it and over it and over it. Um, I, I will again say that I, speaking for myself, I think that the rec department has done a really fine job in budgeting and keeping informed the public. So I, I appreciate that and I'm sure the public does also.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Noah?
Yeah, I brought a good point about informing the public. So obviously, this is different than the amount that we originally approved. Is there going to be communication out to the public about the increase amount, what that's gonna be used for, the reasoning and all that sort of stuff?
Absolutely. I know, uh, Beth and I are already in the process, you know, it's in the, the draft stage. And, and that is part of, stands back there, um, C G Schmidt's, um, responsibility in the project, who is helping and guiding us through those communication pieces. So, um, we'll be working collaboratively to do that. And we're really excited once, when and if we get the, the okay to completely move forward with this, once we start getting some plans out there, really getting those out and letting people come and take a look.
So, without further ado, can we approve, uh, go ahead and approve ten point two? Ten point two Recreation Center Construction Budget, seconded.
To move and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Great.
Thank you very much.
Get those shovels in the ground before it freezes.
Thank you, Shelley.
It might be too late this year, yeah. All right. Item number eleven, Board Member Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Okay. Um, we will then take a quick five-minute recess while we break down cameras and get ready for our workshop, uh, superintendent's workshop on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar research. We are at recess.